All right, so welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting, March 10th, at 6:15. We are all in attendance. I don't know if anybody got a chance to look at those last minutes. If you did, I was able to review them. I didn't have any.
I wrote them.
I know you did. Okay, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
For a second?
Call those a day.
A day.
Okay, is anybody here who would like to speak to us about something that's not on the agenda? Tonight on our agenda is only plastic bag ordinance. So if you want to speak to anything else besides that, now's your time to speak.
No, anything else, really?
Anything else besides the plastic bag.
Because I came in January to talk about H2810 in Carpe Taxville. So, yeah, so I don't know. Because I know Lindsey signed it and Nicole. And...
I'm not sure.
You signed it?
I think I did. I know you reminded me about it, and I intended to.
Well, I actually have a copy here, and if you want to just... You can either sign it or whatever, but I'll have it in my business card here. So if you want to just... I'll come by and pick it up and scan it. I'm going to be up.
Great.
And scan it, and send it in to Timmy Cohn, who's collecting this. Because I think especially for East Hampton and down there, you guys just raised taxes on a lot of people, right? Reassessing the housing and then the whole thing from middle school. And this has a social justice aspect, where a lot of money is collected for the carbon tax bill back to people of lower and middle incomes. And so for every... If they're in the very lowest income, for every dollar that the cost increased for them, they get $2.07 back. So it's very helpful. Plus, it goes to the construction project, helps with that. And their dates are specific on it. And that's, you know, some of the stuff coming out right now, the Senate three-part thing, the master's is very vague, and recent dates and some numbers that work well with TCI. And let's see, I don't know what it's called. Yeah, TCI and the other.
Thanks.
So, yeah, if you could sign it and, you know, and you could just read through it, sign it. I'll come by and pick it up, or you can mail it in to me, or whatever. Or you can send it to check up.
That's good. Thank you. Okay, so on to our continuing business, which is the proposed ordinance for the reduction and elimination of plastics in East Hampton. So Counselor Zarek, since you're the one that brought that forward, do you want to give us a little intro and bring us up to speed?
Sure. I'll give you the brief version. I really have a brief version. I want to give you a real brief. Real brief.
That's your... You have to say that every time?
Yeah, I know, I know. I think most people here are aware of the problematic issues in regards to the environment with thin plastic bags, polystyrene, expanded polystyrene, or styrofoam, and how they affect the environment. These items, they don't break down, and they're, by and large, not recyclable. And in general, recycling as a broader topic is going the way somewhat of the dinosaurs. It's harder and harder to find facilities that will actually accept recycling and actually recycle them, as opposed to burning them. Most of what was going to China, EJ probably did to get us more, but is now being pushed off to other countries, and that's causing a variety of hazards there. So the proposal that you have in front of you is to essentially eliminate thin plastic bags in East Hampton and replace them with biodegradable compostable bags and/or post-consumer, 40 percent, at least 40 percent post-consumer recycled paper bags, or more importantly, reusable bags. And then also eliminate polystyrene or expanded polystyrene in foodwares, which means anything from bowls, takeout containers, utensils, lids, cups, et cetera. And again, replace those with the appropriately certified biodegradable or compostable items. There's a few exemptions here. There's a few exemptions here, for instance, items that can't otherwise be replaced, or there's a few certain industries where there might not be alternatives. And then, plastic straws. At least currently, in this iteration, the recommendation is, which has been done by and large in most other places, would be to have plastic straws available by request only, and to encourage businesses to offer other compostable or biodegradable options. The... Both in regards to the limiting thin plastic bags and polystyrene bans, both have been done by a large amount of communities within the Commonwealth. I think close to 150 in regards to thin plastic bags, and something closer to 250 for polystyrene that I know might not be in the economy. And the proposals that it's put into effect, this will go into effect a year from the date that it's voted in. That would offer the community enough time to create education around this, have a discussion around this. It would also allow vendors to find ways to... Where would they obtain the recommended materials? And to explore that. And also, a lot of businesses will probably have stock on hand that they would need to get rid of. I think that pretty much covers it. I was second to answer any particular questions, if there's something I could cover. And, oh, the other thing regarding bags that would be made available by by businesses is that there would be a $0.10 fee for either a biodegradable, compostable, or greater than 40 percent post-consumer content paper bags. One thing that I'll probably recommend tonight is that we talk about potentially the size of store without a charge of fee. So I think that's pretty much it. If it does, that's a good starting point.
Yeah, I think it is a good starting point. Does anybody want to weigh in at this point?
Yeah.
While we're in the beginning stages here?
That's Segal Butter Street. I really don't like the exemptions, because I think those are the worst bags. The ones for newspapers, for produce. Those are the bags that get flying all over the place. They're thin, they're horrible. I would rather see those go away than some of the other things. I mean, I don't want styrofoam, I don't want any of that. But I'm looking at that, and I'm going, dry cleaning newspapers, produce, wet bulk foods. You can... I mean, yes, there's an initial investment, but there's all these little nylon bags and, you know, that you can use for produce and things.
What about the corn-based plastic bag?
Yeah.
Do you have a co-op? Although I've signed, you have to have the commercial.
Yeah.
Counselor Zarek.
So if I didn't make it clear, produce bags are actually included in this. I'll look back at the exemption.
Well, I'm reading of the exemptions.
No, but I think that... I mean, those won't be exempt. It's just the meat, poultry, and raw fish, which is probably something we could talk about, but I probably... Did I forget to pick that out?
Yeah, because it's 4.1. These papers, produce.
Oh, we'll take the produce. Yeah, because that's... Yeah, that's complex. Yeah. So I actually specifically put the produce bag back in, because I agree with that.
Use them.
So anyhow, but, yeah. I don't disagree with what you said.
Yeah, I do get the... You know, that I've answered all of the questions. So I'm not sure what to start, when I have something for my lunch. I should look at my calendar a lot of the time. But one thing, on the first page, at least, biodegradable is a word that we have in the legislature. It doesn't... What I'm most worried, I know the attention, is something that will be used in the environment will not hurt it, but a lot of greenwashing happens on packaging. It says biodegradable, and it just means it can fall apart. It doesn't mean that it doesn't have something positive, that what you really need to have is compostable, certified compostable. Packaging that our stores are buying, so that they understand that this can go in a compostable place. If you start to do compostable, a lot of things, and also, the Center for Eco-Technology has a program that each vendor, each store can go to, and they can help them set up a composting system for their... Because if you have the, like, break now, David, the operation has compostable, and if you throw your thing away there, that's great. If you bring it home, and you just put it either in your... Can't go in your backyard, has to go in a commercial facility. So, and it acts the same way as all this other stuff, unless you bet it in a commercial facility. So having that program in there as well would be very helpful. I don't have a... Well, I'll, you know, everything I said in the...
Right, in the email.
Yeah.
Well, and as things come up, you can feel free to try them.
Yeah.
I would just... I just have another question here. I would add, don't feel like you need to hold back. Like, this is the opportunity for discussion, so, you know.
Shredding on?
Well, if you want. Like, I just don't feel... I don't feel you should feel rushed or...
Well, I would say this. I would say, let's kind of let people say things.
Let other people say things. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Zarek.
I guess the one thing I can say is that the standards that we're talking about being required are all compostable, are all composting standards. So like that ASTM 6400, 6868, those are...
They are.
They are. So I agree. And then even the biodegradable, the definition of biodegradable basically says that it means it's compostable. So we could probably... So, are you talking about the cover letter, or the actual ordinance?
It's under general definitions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the biodegradable packaging part.
Can you get a copy of that?
Uh, I think it matters. No, I don't want to mention it.
So I was gonna say that even the definition of biodegradable alludes to composting. So you're right, we might be able to eliminate that term altogether.
We just wanted that people could see biodegradable and start buying, and all of that stuff in the packaging. It said biodegradable, it only means it falls apart, doesn't mean that it's compostable.
I think that's a fair point, yeah.
Yeah, I'd back that up, too. I mean, I was... Because my daughter works at the National Renewable Energy Laboratories, and she was saying biodegradable doesn't mean anything necessarily. She thinks it breaks down. It's good, but...
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Sarah, I'm at Bubbin Street. And I just moved here from North City, New York, and I helped to work on the plastic bag legislation in New York, and I worked at Riverkeeper, and also as a member of the community, formed an environmental organization there, and I helped with legislators and their plastic ordinances, and actually have examples of what we're running from the language that we worked on together. But I would encourage you to get rid of the word biodegradable completely from this legislation for all the great reasons that have been named. And it's very confusing. Just to build on that, being a newcomer here, I also mentioned, I started my own company that was like Pedal People, and we had a bike power compost program. And compostable bioplastics, they need to go to industrial facility, as EJ said. It's not too clear yet, like, where these plastic bags can go, the biodegradable, sorry, the compostable ASTM 6400 bags that we're encouraging with this legislation. What outlets exist within the city of East Hampton to accept the... Like, do we have any commercial facilities that are operating on a level that accept bioplastics? Because Riley, the answer was no. There was one that was like 40 miles away, and that was the only one, and they've given them out. So something very complicated to upgrade, and I wonder if you would like to run that.
Well, I could definitively answer that we have no resources for that within the city of East Hampton. However, I do know that the statewide waste management plan, I think, was just finished, and there are three, I think, I believe, three with... In the 91 corridor, commercial composting facilities. I don't know where they are with the ASTM 6400, what their capability is for that, but I know that we... There should... I think there's three in the 91 corridor.
I think you could help city compost that actually gives your back afterwards, you get to make it.
Yeah.
I know, pretty sure regional schools have a commercial compostable thing on it. They put chicken bones and everything in that, so maybe this level is in like New York or East Hampton.
I think it is. I think one of them is in South Deerfield or in that area. I do know that. But it's definitely something that...
But I could find out. Could you try to find that? If it's more or dearier.
Yeah, I mean, I think that... Well, I know that the Center for Eco-Technology in North Hampton, which is in the Cutler Building, they have someone who's dedicated to that. I think what we'll do is we'll probably invite her to the meeting.
Oh, that'd be great.
The next meeting, so.
I have a question.
So just remember to state your name and your address for the record.
Okay. So Timmy Cohn and I have La Croisana and partners with Julia for the boogie pole and the rest up there. So am I understanding that what you're saying is, unless it gets to the correct recyclable facility, then it's nothing different about it than any other?
Yeah, I would say...
So unless... So we could put in this ordinance, and unless we have something in place for all this that we're having the ordinance for, to get to the right commercial facility, it does no difference. It goes in the...
Cutlery, when you're talking, the bags and whatnot, definitely gone, but there will be a reduction. With the cutlery and things like that, and the straws, yeah, it has to go to, and that's where if you had like a big operation, they have a bin, and they will take it, and they have a compost pickup. The program is free, and they actually can save money on the cash afterwards, because we have a learning type monitor, and four years will help out a lot of them.
So there are resources for restaurants to be able to get the stuff to the right facility?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's an important piece.
Yeah, but actually, I can... How to do it, it's cheaper than the trash.
So one of the things on here is what I'm understanding is takeout. We guys are looking at the takeout containers. So there's a difference of somebody eating and us trying to go through our trash, or have an area that the straws go on into, or whatever else might be. But if you're now talking about takeout containers, which is actually my biggest concern about La Croisana, we serve a lot of things with a lot of sauces, and there are only... And it's not for a lack of trying to find the right container for the takeout, but there's so many different factors for us, too. And one of them is the customer satisfaction of getting it at home in a paper bag, without that paper bag turning into a soggy mess, and getting it into the bottom of the pocket. It's just the truth of it. And so our sauces, our dishes, need a really tight seal on the to-go containers. And if we're gonna throw in this to-go container, the to-go things, then you're talking about each home having that recyclable, correct ability to be able to get it to the correct facility. I understand the restaurants. I agree with the restaurant part of it. I think that it would cut down on US management, waste management, and if I can do something for the environment, then I'm all for that. I'm just expressing the challenges that would come up in the to-go containers. And the to-go containers are then going to go to individual homes. And if I'm to understand it correctly, if they don't bring that to-go container into the proper facility, then it's no different. And I guess that that's where my voice would be with that. And if we include the to-go containers, it needs to be a much deeper, you know... And I get that we're all trying to get to that point, and to not do something doesn't help to get to that point. I get that. But there's so many challenges. I mean, the streets are gonna become empty, I believe, sometime soon in the near 24, 48 hours. And that's a huge impact for restaurants, especially one that is 13 days old, 14 days old, you know? And so we have many, many challenges in front of us. And it's not that we're not willing to look at it and to work on them, but I can tell you that these two owners sitting in front of you tried everything we could do to get a correct boba straw for our tees. And it's nearly impossible. We tried plastic paper, we tried bio, we tried bamboo. We tried 20 samples in our office. Everything. Not just samples, like packs of 100 each. So we had to buy, and to try, and to do, and none of them will get the bobas up through the straw. It's a problem. Do you need a straw?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I know what they are. Can you take it without a straw?
Juliette Long, sorry. Juliette Long, 49th Reunion Street. And I get the holder between compostable and biodegradable, I get, from the straw perspective. If our people were going to be taking straws out and throwing them wherever they throw them, it almost made more sense to use biodegradable, because then at least you know they're not gonna stay in straw form, where compostable, they actually have to be brought to that special facility to be cut down. So I know... No, please, if you know something that I don't, I'd love to hear it. Because I know that compostable is better. Compostable means it'll actually break down and turn back into soil. Biodegradable means... The difference between natural and organic. Like, this is an all-natural such-and-such. That means very little, but if you say it's like 100 percent certified organic, that has actual certification. That's what we're talking about, the ASTM 6400. There's this federally recognized certification around that. So the word biodegradable is complicated. I want to tell you, my friends at La Croisana are developing an edible home compostable straw. It's not ready for a boba tea yet, but they are working with Starbucks and some really big companies. They're on Shark Tank. They're amazing.
If they could do the boba, just make it white enough. Be to expand just a little bit more than what the expectation is, and so they can then do the process. And I have to also say, since the opening in July at La Croisana, we've changed our straw policy. And we've changed it because of the consumer in East Hampton. You know, so big kudos to that. We try not to stick them in automatically anymore. We try to do exactly what this ordinance is saying, wait until the consumer asks for it, you know?
I noticed that today. I was there today, and I noticed that.
Yes. We, you know... And it might... You might have been the one who asked us to do that, actually. I don't... It was somebody... It was somebody, and we said, you know what, why can't we do that?
Yeah.
You know, why can't we? That's such a simple little thing that we can do. We're not fighting with a margarita person who wants that straw, who doesn't want to pay for one. But we're not also... So we can change, and we are so willing to change, but there has to be some parameters that help the small... Because we're small business owners. I mean, a lot of times, you hear the statistics, we have like three days of a month that we actually make money. The other 28 days, 27 days, we're paying our employees, paying our landlord, paying, you know, everything else. And so it's just something that needs, in my mind, to be considered when you're looking at this ordinance and writing it up, and thinking about that takeout container, and knowing that we're trying our best, but if there was a law that was put down smack in front of us, it's a struggle. It's another challenge that is not that we're not gonna face it and deal with it, but it's... My sauces, they're delicious. They're gonna win.
Counselor Zarek.
Thank you for opening both your businesses. And I went to yours for the first time the other day. It was fantastic. So I wrote this with your specific concerns in mind, because it's inevitable, unfortunately for now, with some of the technologies that we have, that there's just certain container requirements that will not be met by compostable, or sorry to use the word biodegradable, materials. So, you know, and so the way it's written is you can basically have a list of requests and exemptions, like, oh, I use this toss container, can't find anything that's equivalent to it in order to, you know, provide my customers the ability to transport this liquid from my restaurant to their house without it leaking. So that's in there. I love that helps.
Yeah.
And there is... Another thing that's important is there's a... So not only are there... There's a hardship department for that particular... There's a year-long kind of phase in.
Right, that year-long, I vote for year.
Right. Well, and as, you know, I mean, as we continue to move forward, and these types of ordinances get passed more in a more widespread fashion, I think that what we'll see is we'll see more innovation around...
Manufacturers.
Manufacturers. Hopefully, we'll see some hemp plastics that are gonna be coming out that are, you know, resilient and compostable. I mean, who knows? But I think, I just want to get a little bit of distinction here. As far as the compostable versus biodegradable, it almost seems like the biodegradable would turn into microplastics, and compostable would turn into soil. Right? Is that the simplified way to look at it?
And you guys are gonna just be so mad when I tell you that it's more complicated than that even. There have been many of the large-scale producers of bioplastics have shown that there are certain things like, you know, endocrine disruptors, there's PFOS and fluorinated compounds within a lot of these bioplastics, and even like the papery, bagos, sugarcane, compostable containers, those are also coated with a layer of fluorinated compound to prevent the leaking of certain, you know, sauces, oils, and grease. So some compost facilities that are trying to create a really high-quality product are phasing out bioplastics, they're phasing out all these compostable products, because they don't want these chemicals in the soil, because farmers are paying that group. So I'm encouraging you to do things. One, we need to get a really clear sense of what facilities exist in the area that can handle bioplastics and compostable materials. What are their policies? What... Where are they looking? And then, here in Duchess County, where I used to live, I'm reading the draft legislation that's being circled around within the county level. There's a single-use plastics ban that they're trying to put forth, January 2021. Happy to share that with everybody in the room who want to look at this, and it would take some other language, but we were trying to have a list of approved products that are certified compostable, and there are absolutely companies that are saying, we know there's fluorine compounds in some of these, we're taking a stand, they're not ours. So it's very complicated, but there's companies who are really trying to do it right.
So when you say bioplastics, you're talking about like corn-based, soy-based?
Yeah, and even like the hemp stuff, the thing that you mentioned.
Technically biodegradable.
Technically compostable.
Tech-compostable.
Yes, yes.
But they have BPA and...
Some of them do, and some of them have other, you know, chemicals that are, you know, we're discovering. This is, you know, less than 10-year-old industry, and things are changing really fast, and facilities are changing what they can and can't do. You know, what they... They're listening to their customers, who are farmers, who are growing food. So I think part of the conversation that we were having in Duchess County was about reusables, and for restaurants to, you know, give a bit of incentive to people to bring in their own containers. Now, I don't know how full code is, that could be complicated, but reusables, I feel, and should be encouraged as much as possible, you know, with the full cooperation of the health department setting forth those parameters.
Right, yeah. Right now, the coffee places are no longer allowing you to bring your reusable coffee to Starbucks in some places, because of the coronavirus. So you're gonna be getting more of the paper and the plastic, because they don't want to... Yeah. Well, that was my question, reusable. See, I don't go out to eat for that one reason. It's like, if I want to take something home, and I don't remember to bring my metal container with me, and you know what, I wasted, so I just never... I, yeah, anyways, I don't go out to eat for that reason, because I don't want to see all the stuff that is not good. Yeah, you know?
Yep, sorry.
I have a question. I'm Anthony Crowley, 780th Street in East Hampton.
What's your license?
Corolla. A-A-R-E-L-L-A. Sure, I'm the odd man out here, but there's a lot of information out about what you're talking about. And I chose these articles from NPR, because I figured anybody here would be comfortable with the NPR. And this one's entitled, "Our Plastic Bag Bans Garbage." And this one's called, "Why banning plastic grocery bags for big bad move?" And explains it in these. I'll let you have them. I should have made more copies, but the telling... The telling thing here is this chart shows as what you call single-use plastic bags, which are probably the only bags that aren't single-use. People lose them for trashcan liners, for picking up dog waste, for packaging stuff, for Christmas ornaments, all kinds of things. And this shows as the ban increases, that the heavier and larger bags increase dramatically. So you're taking the thinnest bag possible that you can make, and you place it to heavy, heavy bags. And that's not, you know, not hearsay. This is... I mean, you can look at these and comment that you made about the recycling thing not being available. If you want to get this National Geographic magazine, which is invited... If you want to get this National Geographic magazine, which is entitled, "The Under Trash", and read through this and kind of what she was talking about. There are all kinds of industries in different countries and in the United States that are all over this. Because if there's money to be made commercially, you know, companies get into it. And it's really quite interesting, there's companies that have already come up with a way of taking these plastics that people like to call not recyclable, and turning them into pellets, the resin that people use to make plastic. And if you go through this whole thing, what you're talking about, the under trash, is actually possible to do. But my initial problem, like I said, was this single-use thing. Because any plastic bag is a single-use bag. Your laundry bags, your garbage bags, your cup bags you use, you know, on construction sites, they're all single-use bags. And like I say, the ones that get reused the most are the ones that you like to call the single-use.
What's the date on that?
This is 3/2020. And the other, what she was talking about, you know, with the containers, I mean, that's another issue. And so you don't want to spiral from container to same thing happens there. I've seen it already in places, like, oh, you got a heavy plastic container that's almost as low as Tupperware, just, you know, because of every reason. So, that's all I have to say.
I just wanted to say that I think when we do these plastic bag bans that...
Thank you.
We're seeing a lot of other issues arise. And I think what our real goal is in spirit is the reduction of all packaging as possible. That's the spirit of it. So, like, a plastic bag ban, and I know I've written some of these articles to increase the use of, right, of other bags. But what we're trying to do is not just lay this down in a, like, single strategy. We want to use this to mobilize and bring awareness to the community and mobilize. So today, Owen and I went to visit the bag chair, and he's with Lenny. And so the thicker bags he was talking about can be reused to make reusable bags. So if you can start creating, and like the pellet bags, he was talking, and I was feeling guilty for throwing out pellet bags earlier when she was explaining, like, you can use those as your garbage bags. You can turn them into a shopping bag immediately. So these thicker bags that the gentleman was talking about are a problem, but they can be, they don't have to be single-use. They can be reusable. And especially now with, you know, the fuel or a lot of the packaging comes from China and other places. The more we can keep things local and reusing, it can create more resiliency for our community. And we're talking about, it's not just about, it's changing the mindset. So like, if we go get a coffee, we bring our own cups, like, just like you bring your own bags. I totally, so I don't think, like, our goal is to put a hardship on our business owners. And so I totally hear if there's not a takeout container. Because right now, that's, but maybe there's going to be a point where people can bring in their own container, or something's going to happen down the road as we together mobilize. Like, the Girl Scouts have reached out to us, because they want to, like, they want to help. They feel that this is important, this is the earth that they're getting. So, I just want to say, like, these, I feel, speak to, like, single strategy, like, we're just eliminating bags and now we're saving the world. No, that's not going to save the world, and it is going to create other problems. So this is just like the baby step to get us all on board to change our behavior, change culture.
180 Hudson Street. So, maybe there could be something, because this is like at the co-op, they used to give you a credit if you brought in your own bag. But now, they moved to, so they charge you to bring your own bag. Maybe something like that can happen with, like, the restaurants. It'd be great if, like, you looked up the type, 3 ounces, and said, if you bring in your own container, 10 ounces for this, whatever ounces.
Well, and I love that idea, but when you order a takeout, you want to walk in, and the takeout is there waiting for you. See, that's where the change of mindset. Yeah, and I understand, you know, yes, but it's also how we prepare the food, you know. And, well, it's just how we prepare, I mean, I can put it in anything, but we can't time it properly with all the other food that is being ordered to wait for this takeout to have the container be brought to us. It just is not possible. And I'm going to be quite honest here, we use a black bottom container. And we all know what black bottom is doing. And it is one of the things that, it is one of the, like, my husband wants to throw them away because we end up taking food home with us for his or for whatever. And I said, Philip, we can't throw them away, they're so reusable. They are so sturdy. And he goes, well, what are we going to do with them all? And I go, we put them on for Thanksgiving, for Easter, we just, you know, for slime, we just reuse them. I mean, we just reuse them. And I was talking to my friend, and she goes, I love your containers. I never throw them away because they are so reusable in that sense. But to have our consumer bring them a reusable to-go container, I love your idea about leftovers. You know, like, if you're to go out, you bring your leftover container. I love that. My mom does that in her residential home. They go, they go all that food over the plate, and everybody, every single table has a Tupperware container on there for the leftovers. And that could be a wonderful new mindset, you know, that would help small businesses, you know. And, you know, I would, I would put up a poster about that, you know, because that makes sense for what we're trying to achieve here. And it makes, it takes away a challenge from, you know, and a cost. And it's a wonderful thing to do, and the health department doesn't get involved in it.
Seems like a good opportunity for an entrepreneur to start a company called Tuppershare. I've met all the restaurants.
I was going to say, I actually do have a bunch of your to-go containers in my Tupperware.
Because they are so reusable.
Yeah, they look up.
Yeah, they do.
Beth McAlpin, Wonderland on Coney Street. And again, those containers, and my partner is in Springfield and works in Towers. And wherever he goes to get lunch, that's the containers they give them. I have a stack of them in my apartment. I wash them every use. I give all my neighbors soup in them, they bring them back to me, and I wash, I use those all the time. So even though you're considering them single-use containers, to me, they're so not single-use. I would like to suggest that instead of putting together legislation that has basically demands in it that actually, especially now, don't seem that they can be met with the compostable aspect of commercial compostable recyclers, not in the area in the first place, that education is really the key, and getting the community involved forums or, like, how can we all participate in this? Instead of putting the onus on the businesses where we're all struggling to survive. And like she said, my biggest concern right now is surviving the next two months. Like, what's going on right now? And the fact that the governor declared state of emergency for our state today, and it's boomeranging everywhere. People are going to stop gathering, they're going to stop shopping, they're going to be calling Amazon for everything, which isn't going to help anything in the world. And we're all under, like, heavy stress to even survive right now. So to be giving businesses fees because they're not using a 40% recycled paper bag, I have issues with that. And I am all about recycling. My store is all about vintage, you know. My whole store is filled with products that are 70 to 100 years old. And my whole house is filled with recyclable everything. But at the same time, I don't think I have an issue with government then coming into my life and telling me, I'm going to fine you if you're not using a paper bag that meets our requirement. And over legislation, and it's like, if we educate people about what's happening in the cycle of things, and we give incentives to be part of the solution, I think it's far more effective, in my opinion. I didn't get to see the legislation before I walked in, the proposal before I walked in here, so I'll look at that further. I'm sure it could be rewritten a lot more. And I also want to understand, so, is this, so explain to me, Owen, an ordinance, is that a proposal to put something on the, to be voted on by the people in the city? Or is it something done and then we all have to abide by it?
The latter.
It's just put into place by the city government, and then everybody has to...
So I can elaborate on that. So, so the process is...
We only got to be able to page.
Oh.
Oh, wait, really?
It was at the back.
It was two-sided. So, the process is pretty simple, it goes through committees. We take as long as we need with it to make sure that we, the three of us, feel like the final product is ready to go to the full council, we'll vote on it to go to the full council. When it goes to the full council, we set a public hearing, at which time the entire council will then weigh in, and there'll be opportunities for the public to be able to speak on it. So there are multiple opportunities to be able to have input and to make your voice heard. And so, it's not something that we would just say, oh, this is done, it's lost. It has to go through the committee where we vet it, and then to the full council with the full public.
Trying to understand the actual process.
Yeah, it's the big difference between town and city, is that towns, you have been to town meetings, or on these things, and cities, you elect the city council, but then does that work?
And I apologize, because I'm missing page four, so I'm only seeing 4.4. No, it's okay. I'm only seeing 4.4 through 4.8.
Those are exemptions.
Oh, these are exemptions. Okay, so I guess I'm wondering, does this include, or has there been any focus on, like, single-use water bottles or Coca-Cola? Because that, to me, is a much bigger problem than grocery bags.
So that was something that I was going to be bringing into this discussion, this is a lot else. So, but it wasn't part of the original proposal. But I would agree with you that I think single-use water bottles are probably one of the biggest issues.
Looks, right, like, just single-use plastic.
I mean, the difference between a single-use water bottle and a single-use soda bottle is, under Massachusetts law, soda and carbonated beverages generally fall under the bottle redemption bill. So that means you get a nickel if you bring it back. So there's a much more, there's much more incentive to bring it back. Under, there was legislation that was tried to pass for water bottles that failed under the lobbying of the water bottle companies. But, so you can just toss water bottles left and right with no, you know, no financial penalty, which is disappointing. And we can't do a local bottle redemption, that's unfortunately not within our...
But we can also have an educational forum about the water bottles and the water in the water bottles. We are in a city that has the best water, small city water in the country. And people are carrying around Coca-Cola bottles that are filled with petroleum product because they've been sitting in a warehouse somewhere for two years, getting hot, and it's leaching into the water they're drinking. And, but people don't understand that. And that's where I'm going back to the education.
Because they have too much BPA in their system. They can't think clearly.
It starts with the kids, too. I mean, the, you know, the kids in the schools need to know this. It's, I just feel like education.
I'm not going to disagree that education is a really important piece of this. I would just say that unfortunately, the function of the council right now is to review the ordinance that's in front of us. And the council doesn't really have an education arm necessarily. I mean, we have, there's public schools in East Hampton that we would hope would be, you know, doing some of this work. But, you know, the main function of the city council is not necessarily an educational, not that there aren't parts of this where people can gain information, but that's not necessarily the focus of what we do. And I'm not saying that there's no value to that, I'm just saying that, like, that's the reality of...
That sort of thing really probably goes with the names office. We don't have much of that, or C.R.C.
Yep, yep.
I agree, and I think that a lot of people don't have time for, to be educated, and this is a way. And I've been doing it for the past two and a half years, I've been doing education in groups. And I have Farmer's Market, and I have a home lecture, too. People do what they can for the educational work, but a lot of times, it has to also come from legislation as well to bring it into the normalcy as well, and then people adapt. So it's both ways. So understanding why it's a limb if you do, sometimes it has to go both ways. If someone says, for you to pick your straw, it's going to be by request, maybe this Tupperware can also be by request when you're given to go. Yeah, because that would be huge if you just made that by request, even if...
So, and I agree, so I retrain my employees to ask. Because I think a lot of people assume that's in there. And so when that one assumption is there, and we don't, if we're thinking that we need to request it, I mean, there is an education. But, you know, I have to say, the one takeaway, I try to always do a great takeaway. The one great takeaway that I've had so far is, because my mother does this, too. I would offer free chips if it's somebody bringing their own leftover container, you know. And there you go. Okay, let's see. There's an education part, as you know. And the purpose of us giving free chips is that we want you to bring in a leftover container to put your leftovers in. I love that. It's a very simple thing that we can do and put out there. We might get five people in one month to do it, but that's five people. And then maybe somebody at the next table sees what they're doing, or why did they get some free chips, you know. So, to be honest, that's my takeaway from tonight. I mean, we all, I think, are in this room to try to figure out our part and our role in how we can make things better. And I know that right now I'm limited in some of the things that I can do, but I can do that. I can do the silverware, I can educate, you can put a sign up that says, if you want silverware, please, you know, utensils, please ask. So there's a lot of things, and, yeah, that's...
That's great.
...to respond here.
Good idea.
The people that are going to take out are running it home.
Yeah, and they have their own, yes, okay. So that's a wonderful, yeah, absolutely.
Say that all the time, so, put it in there.
I have to clarify about the plastics with Sarah. So, if you think, if the certified compostable materials don't go to a composting facility and end up in the landfill, do they, they never break down?
It's slower. It's slower, and it releases methane. Just the same with an organic material, we're releasing methane. It's still part of the life cycle, there's still, something that was once alive is like part of that bioplastic now. So in some ways, people argue, I don't take that really hard stand on this, but some people argue that it is way worse using bioplastics because they go to landfill, and in real life, it uses methane. Whereas recyclable single-use plastics can get recycled if, now, they're cleaned out and reprinted, and actually recycled, which doesn't happen that frequently.
And how does that compare to those with the bag or polystyrene containers in the landfill?
Polystyrene will never, ever, ever, ever break down. We hear beyond our great, 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 great grandchildren, it just breaks into millions and millions of pieces. There is a supposed end-of-life cycle for other plastics, but it's upwards of, you know, 500 to 1,000 years depending on the plastic you're talking about. And there was something else I wanted to say about the plastic bags. The gentleman who left, Rob, of an interesting point. And we are seeing that in Dutchess where the bagging went to just last month, or January or other. And people are really concerned about all of the single-use bags not being available anymore. They're buying other bags that are thicker. And studies do show that the numbers go up, but again, it's about education. There's a year-long timeframe in which to hold this change out. Most people have a cupboard full of thousands of bags, hundreds of bags. And people aren't really thinking about the everyday bags they come across that can be used for the everyday functions, like picking up cat litter, dog waste, litter, trashcan. You can use red bag, carrot bag, tortilla bag, or the bag that comes from Amazon. All these plastic bags are coming into our, without our, you know, thinking about it. And most can also be reused, too. I wanted to mention that, too, because that's an amity to vote on in Dutchess County, is educating about that. I think that's very important. Education can be a really key part of what happens, and we've got not a lot of time now to do this because the ordinance would take effect a year from the date of passage. And, you know, we're probably looking at, at least a year from now, probably a year and a half from now, to where we sit today. So there's plenty of time to think about how, everything we're currently going through this week, this month, it'll play a role in all this. But there's ample time to make changes and really think about how we want to address this community.
And just to be clear, that was one of my, PJ asked me about this, like, that was my exact reason for including, or one of many reasons for including that year-long period. Because as everyone's stated here, you know, the legislation is a piece. because as everyone's stated here, you know, the, the legislation is a piece to a larger, to a larger issue. It's, 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 it's a gear, it's a cog in a machine that's, uh, moving us, uh, towards a, a more sustainable world. And so, you know, that year, so while there isn't an educational arm with the council, it, it's part of my plan to make sure that we're somehow facilitating education in the community, having bag share events, making thousands of bags that are available for people, and, and using this as a few steps down a pathway of sustainability, as opposed to just having this exist in the background.
Right. Well, and there's, and there's a lot of things that could easily be addressed by us that are really important, like composting of waste food because of the amount of methane. I mean, that's a huge problem, and it's, it's pervasive, and we just haven't gotten there yet. Um, I think this is, like, looking at this, we're surrounded by two communities that have a plastic bag banned already, um, and they, you know, they survived, New Hampton being the bigger one, um, and, and they were able to transition without too much. Um, you know, I mean, I think there was probably some growing pains, but I think we're used to it, so...
And New York City banned one as much as it's worth, uh, I can...
If you think the UK, the UK, like, the UK, aren't they...
I think EU is banning, you know, like, all, just all single-use plastics.
I have to say, either rather than South Hampton, um, it was growing pains to go into the big wine, and I was not going to pay ten cents for a bag. And so I have more of the reusable bags than I wished for, and they trained us. They trained us, you know? Now I don't go in without a bag, and I get my little praises from the baggers, saying, oh, you have so, you have enough bags, because I'm sure some people come home with two bags and they really have four bags of groceries, and that makes it hard enough. So I like my little praises that I get. I mean, hasn't it been... Yeah, you gotta get some more, right? The bag or the wine. But, um, they, it took, it took me three or four times, but I'm trained now.
Yep.
You know, and it's in all of our vehicles, and so it does force my...
I think you're kind of a good point why legislation is important to go along with, um, with education, because there's things like that where maybe I, like you, like, I want to always bring my bags, I might not, I might forget or this and that, but those kinds of things, like, push the awareness to the surface, and I had the same experience in California, a family reunion where, of course, they're bringing bags, I was, like, traveling, and I got to the store, and the way they treat in California is like, they're like, oh, are you going to need to buy bags today? That's like the, and I was like, oh, I guess so, I'll leave a buy, you know, it was like, oh, okay, yeah. And then, but because they brought that awareness to the surface, at the, you know, at our Airbnb, we saved all the bags from the first shopping trip, and we used them for the rest of the time. So it's like, the law pushes, pushes the importance, so I think the law is important with education.
Especially, like, Trader Joe's makes great bags.
Yes.
Yes, which are a hundred, a hundred percent post-consumer.
And we are actually working on the possibility of a cottage tree, so I'm also the head of the Cottage Tree Rich Association, which is great. Um, but we are designing a map for Cottage Tree, and we're talking about putting that on bags for Cottage Tree, just like the ton in climate, so that's in the future works for Cottage Tree, but, um...
That would be, you know, so Lindsay and I just came, came back from making these bags in the back share.
Oh, I love that, sure, they're...
So it would be cool to, to combine the two, you do like a stamp or something, or like a stencil, I guess, put on the back share bag.
You work on your new street, you don't work on Cottage Tree, so how does it work on me?
Cottage all these beautiful ones.
All right, so...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Counselor Pete here.
I'll work on it.
Counselor Pete, please.
Uh, so, okay, I've got, uh, one question here. Um, have we checked with, uh, it says the health department ordinance?
I have that.
Yeah. Do we, do we just have a sense of where they are on all of this?
Yeah, I know them.
Really?
Yeah, I've, I've had multiple conversations with three. She's, she texted me and said that she's, she hasn't yet looked at the actual ordinance, but we talked, yeah, three to five times about this, and gave her the general overview. She said she was a hundred percent for it. She actually was the health agent in Greenfield when they implemented their polystyrene ban, and she's like, no problem, totally on board. Um, she want, you know, she hasn't read the specifics, um, but she has no issues with this.
She also said it's fine to bring your own company, no health department issues.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Well, that'd be, except for the coronavirus.
So historically, you know, so we did, when we, when we looked at this issue in the past, because we did, um, our health, the, the previous health agent was completely one hundred percent, one eighty degree from that. Oh, yeah, not even...
Well, you know, it is, it's not, it's historically understaffed department, continues to be understaffed, so...
Yeah, man, that was one of them, you know, one of the drivers of us not actually not being banned and doing the recycling programs.
She had, like, zero hesitation.
Well, okay, great.
Yeah, I had that underlined as well.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, and I think, you know, um, I, I feel like I've kind of heard where people are standing on this, I, you know, I wouldn't mind going through the actual ordinance and looking at some specifics here, and like, maybe pulling some stuff out and, and looking at the specifics. Um, so how does that sound to you guys?
It sounds great, except that I gave myself one of them.
Someone has my double touch.
Uh, and, and so, um, I don't know where you guys want to start, I mean, we could start with the definitions, but I feel like those definitions are probably, um, you know, pretty standard definitions, other than the biodegradable packaging, I don't know if that's something that, um, we want to, we want to take a look at.
I'll double-check where I got that one from, because some, this is a, this is kind of the amalgamation of, uh, a variety of other ordinance that already existed, and also, uh, the Boyer Plate one, the Sierra one, that.
Okay.
But I don't, I mean, based on the feedback that we got here, I don't know if removing the word biodegradable, because I think gently, what you're trying to do is quite...
Yeah, sure, I, I mean, I think that we probably shouldn't remove it from the A S T M D seven oh eight one international standard. I mean, it seems like that's probably, can stay.
Right.
Um, but maybe biodegradable packaging, which is our, you know, on its own, isn't a quote...
Sure.
I mean, just in general, I love that there are, like, actual, yeah, A S T M, you know, it's here because it makes it really easy for anyone that's going to be enforcing this to be like, you know, well, lay for the business to know that they're actually going to be purchasing the thing that meets this, and also for whoever's going to be, and then forcing this, to know whether or not any given thing is actually, there is or is not.
Right, right. And then, yes, yeah.
So, uh...
I don't know, do you want to, I mean, the definitions are things that we...
There's only one question I have on the definition, though. So, ultimate consumer, is that like some sort of, like, super consumer? Or is that just the end consumer?
That's, the ultimate consumer is me when I go to...
So you consume everything?
Uh, it's just, like, it's, when I read it, it just kind of struck me, like, the ultimate...
You don't do, you could do this for a lo, a long, much longer than I have, you don't have the languages, and, and consumer...
End consumer, like, you know, unless we're, unless we're classifying a new type of consumer, which...
Well, again, I mean, it could be, yeah, where is that for me?
Uh, it's, so under retail food establishment, it's there. It's also, uh, yeah, right, the ultimate consumer, yeah.
Three times in the last week.
Page one, page line three, retail establishment.
Ultimate consumer.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
And it's also...
And end consumer, you...
Yeah, I would say end consumer is probably...
And retail food establishment somewhere, too, probably, ultimate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all some weird ideas.
But I mean, I love it, I love it, I just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, and so I just, uh, that was one thing. Everything else I thought was good on, on that. Um, under general, uh, I don't want, actually, I'll just wait till we get to that, so, skip to that before.
Um, I, I also include A S T M twice, but I just eliminated that.
Okay.
Uh, I think I need to note to myself, too, I missed still, um, a few, it's a two, seven tools, so...
Thank you all for all your hard work, I need to go.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. So, uh, and, and maybe, as we're looking at definitions, biodegradable straw, maybe we want to say compostable straw.
Compostable straw, I would, uh, I also added, so where was the...
What did you say about the straw?
So it's in, under definitions.
Okay, but we're not doing the ask for the straw?
No, 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 so right now, this is just like, so if we say a word, we, it's somewhere in the ordinance, it'll, this is where the definition of that, so if we say compostable straw, it would mean any straw made of a material that decomposes naturally. So this is just definitions right now.
And that, is that a restriction, that's a, that's an exemption?
It's, it's just a definition.
Just a definition.
We're just going through the definitions, yeah. We have got to the compostable.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Uh, something, so, um, yeah, I agree with that. I, I personally don't have, especially with the, the issues that were highlighted by some of the, the experts here, I think, just using the word compostable is the best and intended and most accurate word used.
Yep.
Actually, you know, I'm looking at legislation for Duchess, and, um, we had accessory single-use food service ware, which means like single-use plastics, then we had compostable, and then explain exactly what compostable means, like certified compostable, and then there was definition for plastic, and then, um, and that kind of encompasses everything. Here we have straws, we have disposable plastic drinking straws, and then we've got biodegradable straws. I know we just discussed that, but, you know, in looking at this and looking at that, maybe we want to say, um, single-use plastics, compostable plastics, and then sort of lump everything in there, because if you're defining straws, and you're also defining disposable food service container, I mean, I can send you this language, and maybe you want to look at that, but it could make things a little bit similar, and eliminate the redundancies of having to go through several times.
Uh, yeah, send it to me, that's probably the easiest thing I could, yeah.
I can also give you, there's a mail, the last, they did, about biodegradable.
Oh, okay.
Those qualities are the same, they're not...
Yeah, I think I saw this in the email, yeah.
Um, in the bag section, I, I included a definition for produce bag, because I kind of, um, you'll see farther down, when we get into the bag stuff, I kind of created the definition within the restriction.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, and I put a definition in there for a produce bag, which, bags provided by a store which produces producer products, which is...
Plus, you added that in?
I made a definition.
Okay, okay, so that's, so we don't see that on there?
You don't see that on there, but it'll, it'll be more relative, that's farther down below.
Okay. Um, all right, so, let's get, let's look at the section three.
Okay.
We have only by customer request, uh, the one that can get three point three.
Oh, we haven't gotten there yet, but I, I changed the wording on there, so I'll, I'll let you know when I, yeah.
So there's another ultimate consumers?
Okay, you can only do one. Where was that?
Uh, it's...
About the ultimate, yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
Hey, thank, thank you so much.
Bye, thanks.
I can drop you, I can drop off to both of you, the full, the full language, and thank you so much for...
I don't look at my straw. I know, I'm looking at your, I know. Can't we use a metal spoon to take out the little bubbles? All right, good night.
Thanks. Okay. All right, so, three point one. Um, so this basically is the restriction for single-use plastic bag.
So we would potentially remove the word biodegradable back in there?
Yeah.
Based on the discussion here?
Yep, so that would be compostable.
I mean, I think based on the discussion we've, we've had here, it's, it's, I won't say it's meaningless terms, but there are people, there are products out there that are biodegradable, but they're not what we're looking for, so I don't have a problem with any of that.
Yeah, that's confusing, because some of these, you know, P P S certified A S T M sixty-four hundred products, you have to use the word biodegradable as well, because people don't necessarily know the difference. I feel like biodegradable is more roughly understood, but I, I do agree with you in eliminating it here from three point one, and really just kind of focusing on reusable, compostable, and recyclable. And, and maybe keeping it like that as a blanket, um, you know, way to address that word throughout, and making it the definition as well, saying that, um, biodegradable doesn't actually associate with any specific, um, certification, but it means X, Y, Z.
Mm-hmm.
I've worked on that before, and I'd be happy to, like, follow up with some of this language afterwards.
Yeah, I guess the only thing we could consider is if we did continue to use the word, I think that's what you're saying, so correct me if I'm wrong, if we did use the word biodegradable, we need to define it as such, so what it really means is compostable.
Yeah.
Right, so like, they're interchangeable, if you see it here, this is what it actually is.
This is what it means.
It's what it loosely means, but, you know, it, it doesn't have any certification associated with it, so when it comes to what's actually acceptable to use, we're looking at compostable, whether it goes for...
Biodegradable, biodegradable, yeah.
Right, and then it's not...
Yeah, we can do a quick Amazon search, and I can find you ten products that are not compostable, but they say biodegradable, it would take me just a second, so terrible.
Right, that's why those A S T M certifications and E P I's are important, even though it says biodegradable is up, yeah.
Right, thank you, guys, you get it.
So, it's three point one one.
Uh, sorry, I didn't...
Sorry, I lost, um, oh, can I, can we go back for a second?
Yeah.
I changed something, I changed, I apologize, in the definitions, the reusable checkout bag?
Reusable checkout bag.
Sorry.
Yeah, I see that.
So I eliminated, I eliminated a few things, and so that definition is something I got from what they use in California, and, um, and I realized that...
You're going to test it?
Right, so you could probably, you could potentially test how much you can carry, but I think that is in spirit, so in other words, the fact that you can carry twenty-five pounds is basically choosing a, a weight that's, um, interchangeable with what people expect from their plastic bags, but I eliminated the whole over distance, just a three or three feet, because it, we don't expect the health, the health agent to stop people in the parking lot.
Then I go, I'm going to weigh that, and then I'm going to carry three hundred feet.
And I also eliminated the design for twenty-five uses, I, I just wrote design for multiple uses.
Okay, that's good.
Uh, because I was thinking specifically, again, I, I, just to clarify, I am, I am, I do not have own stock in the back share project, all right?
Yeah.
It's very exciting.
But, uh, but like, I, I thought about this particular project in mind when I, when I, when I added those edits, because I think it's important to, so...
Yep, some fun.
So it's three point, where were we, three point one one?
Three point one one. Um...
Very talented.
You can't, you can comment.
So that one is, I, I do think that there should be a, a bat, a recycle store. I canvassed all the stores on Cottage Tree, and a lot of those stores are already using, they're already conscious, they're using recycle bags, and they don't even get bags up, and they say, you need a bag, and then the bag is part of their business model, it's like a gift, it's a nice bag, it's recycled, you know, it meets our standards, but it's a gift with the product, and it's like to charge when they're giving, like, a, you know, it's part of their thing.
It's part of the, yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
And so, how about, um, just, I'm sorry, let me, oh, go ahead. Um, I mean, I don't think that it makes sense, but like, but I do think if the bag itself meets our standards, then maybe it should be exempt.
Should be exempt.
No, no, because in a supermarket, we don't want people just switching over to paper that meets our standards, because we're going to up that some kind of bulk amount of paper you're going to all of a sudden start using. That's why it changes behaviors, we have to take that sense, so we're really, we're So we're really, we're really talking about stores that are giving out a lot like...
Stores that are over 5,000 square feet.
The grocery store, yeah.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Exactly.
Bag Share, Starbucks, and Carnacopia and, and other markets, they have a collection of bags with their tag on it that says return to Carnacopia. A store can have third bag and you can keep them. They're not watched, you, you can, you can keep, and it says on it, you can keep this bag if you want to bring it back in the store.
Right.
So which store can have their own bag that are made by, Bag Share made by people?
Yeah, but kind of when they buy, like a lot of those stores are gift stores and the bag that they're buying is like, it has their name, it's part of the gift, you know what I mean? And so, if there are multiple purposes, because the customer, I buy it and then give it as a gift in the bag. And, and like, I was talking to, what's the first, um, one of the store owners?
Who's that?
Not that.
Oh, no, it was Witchworks.
No, no, no.
No? Sonistara.
Crystals.
Oh, sorry, I forgot her, Arwin.
But anyway, yeah, they get it. But she was saying, I don't even give out that many bags and when I do, it's like, it feels like I'm giving something nice away. Like, I don't want to charge someone for that. Even, she's really like, all her, like the bags that you buy coffee in there, everything is already meeting the standards.
So square footage is what?
I think, yeah, we need to talk. Maybe you could, you, I mean, it's, it's a little extra complicated, but maybe you could do both. Like over certain square footage, there's the fee, but under certain square footage, maybe it's still there if you're handing out.
The amount of bags you can get out.
Or, or if it's like, you know, you're exempt from that if you're smaller, if you're using, if you're using the right kind of bag, if you're using just like a standard thin plastic bag.
Yeah, I love you.
Well, you're, you're gonna allow you to.
Listen, that's, wait, that's not allowed for.
So that's not allowed to, that I want, but it's, it's the fee that I agree some of the smaller businesses, like that's core.
Yeah, that's.
And it's like, I agree that like, it's probably just complicated for, you can charge, to charge a 10 cent fee for a bag, but like, you know, Big Ease, the Dollar Store, CVS, uh, you know, so over, and over a certain square footage where you're getting, not only, you're getting multiple bags too. So, and, and they probably have more of a retail structure where they can charge the fee.
Right.
So...
Yeah.
Well, and, and so here's, here's a question. Yeah, so if we're, I mean, we're kind of using this 10 cents to steer people towards reusable.
Right.
Is, is there a reason why we're only looking at the 10 cent fee for a bag?
OEB as opposed to, uh, containers?
For like, takeout containers and straws and...
Well, I think the takeout containers, for the reasons they mentioned, might be different because they're packaging before they even come into the store, but for like plastic ware, why not?
I mean, so anyway, that's just a thought.
Straws?
We don't have to resolve that right now, it's just, it's like, you know, carbon tax will, you know, steer people towards...
Yeah, that's a great point. Like, I think if you're doing plastic ware, you should pay for it.
Um, just a thought, just a thought.
No.
Or use your fingers to.
That's an interesting, let me see.
Do you want to, do you want to look into that?
Yeah, that might be.
I don't want to make it too complicated.
Yeah.
And I don't want to put anything, I don't want to put a stumbling block that's gonna like, you know, cause a disruption to getting this through. But I also think if we're, if this is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me write that down.
Okay, write it down.
We're picking up anyways.
No, they can have, they can have, like, or they can have like a little container if you want to buy your container.
Yep.
So what, what do you guys think about, oh, sorry.
Just a little bit, um, in Dutchess where I'm from, I was helping with the legislation for the plastic bags and like the single-use plastics. And they're two totally separate pieces of legislation. The plastic bag one was way easier to get through. We're on like round two or three for the single-use plastics. I'm happy to send both to all of you, you can look at it and consider it. There's some really helpful definitions, but, um, I do think that maybe, I think it's, I think it's great. The one with single-use plastics, we went into definitions of, you know, here's all the products we can use that are approved. Every restaurant needs to have a combo that's recycled in a garbage can. You know, like that, and then there's a lot of things to help that.
No, I mean, well, if we're looking at like actually making a difference, composting is probably one of the most important things we can do. Well, I was at a farmer's school institute and one of the, one of the things I went to was a presentation from them about composting schools. So that's one of the things we're trying to do right now.
And, and if we're gonna mandate that, literally all a restaurant would have to do is to show that every supplier is eligible, but they're not composting. Now hopefully they use it.
Yeah.
But like, I don't think that's, that's egregious.
It's something to consider, but I think it might be separate from this.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, okay, I, I appreciate you saying that.
It's fine.
Um, so what do you guys think about the square, uh, square footage in regards to the Bag Share?
I think it's fair.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, um, I think a 5,000 would catch everybody.
Okay.
I, I'd have to, we'd have to follow up on that, but I, I believe that 5,000 would catch everybody.
Yeah.
So like CBS?
Right.
And, and Walgreens and Dollar Store, we want to make sure that we, those are the ones that we want, we'd want to come into the fold.
Yeah, I mean, most retail establishments, they stand there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about any of the spaces on, I'll say Union Street first because I want to get Union Street.
Yeah, Union Street.
And then Cod Street, uh, but, uh, I mean, the biggest ones there are, were just like, I mean, I can't imagine it was over 1,000 square feet, or am I...
You're the realtor, yeah.
Well, the space I researched is over 1,000 square feet, so even without saying.
Okay, so maybe 5,000 is safe number.
So I was thinking, I mean, we could, we could drop it to just try to...
We could do a little bit of research and try to tailor it to the...
We'll come up with that number, but I think 5,000 would probably be safe.
It's probably just as easy as getting on the Assessor map, clicking on those parcels to see how big the footprint of the buildings are.
Sure.
And then just figuring out who's the smallest one that we think is still gonna be doing a lot of that kind of volume is.
Yeah, what's the hardware stores?
So just FYI, right before that was 3.1.1, which basically is the produce bag piece. Oh, where is that?
It's Shelby B, retained by the store.
Shelby B, I missed that one.
Where's the BB, where?
Uh, it's 311.
Okay.
Pursuant to the store name Shelby B, retained by the store. So the money Shelby, which...
Oh, no, wait, so didn't I write? Is it written here? I'm trying to play. Oh, somehow, maybe I do, that's weird. I would have written this afterwards, I'm sorry, there's another, there's another 3.1.2. That 3.1.2 is like too bad.
Do we need to print out some new versions?
No, no, the 3.1. No, I swear, I swear this was the version I sent to you guys, but basically I had, the one I'm looking at in front of me is 3.1.1, basically addressed produce bag.
Produce bags, okay.
And it just basically like, it says that they, they have to be compostable, meet ASTM 6400 standards. So, and then 3.1.2 was the fee. Now I understand, I was confused, so, um, I can send you the exact language for that.
And when you looked at this, did, did all the ordinances that you look at have the fee go to the store? Because I, I remember when we were considering this, we were considering having the fee go to, um, like education, an education component. To like make signs and stuff.
Yeah, there were a few different, I read a few different articles about that and a few different options. And it just going to the store was the most prevalent.
Okay, I'm not against that.
Yeah, that was like, that was the most prevalent model. There, I'm trying to remember what some of the other ones were exactly. I think some of them were like some sort of community fund or something like that, but having it just go to the store was what I read.
Cleanest.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, because it means that we don't have to, have somebody for like collecting that.
Collecting.
Yeah.
That's another, that's something we should do.
Someone could consider it as a tax and comp.
It's a tax.
Right, here, you have if you bring your own bag, that they give you that like five cents if you're bringing anything.
That's true, yeah. Yeah, that could happen.
Okay.
So this is good, because I like 3.2 for us and 3.3 for you probably. Banning polystyrene.
No, 3.2 is still 3.2.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, I just have a 3.1.1, which has, which is produce bag.
Okay.
I see it.
Yeah.
And then...
Are we on 3.2 now?
3.2, so this means, and this is what we were talking about from Verivazana. So food containers, so the first part is banning polystyrene. Expanding polystyrene, so styrofoam. And food containers given, sold, provided, or dispensed to any customer within the city of East Hampton must be composed of biodegradable and compostable material.
Or just compostable.
Right, so just compostable. So, composted of.
Compost, compostable.
Compost, composted.
And then I just missed a statement.
Okay, yep. I don't have any issues with it.
It's pretty straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward.
I changed the wording for 3.3.
Okay, what's the new wording?
So, retail food establishments located and doing business within the city of East Hampton shall not give, sell, provide, or dispense plastic straws unless requested by the consumer.
Okay.
Yeah, I changed, because I, a lot of people told me, it's just, it, it made sense if you read it five times, but if you read it, it, it's hard to understand what I'm trying to say.
There's so many opportunities for entrepreneurs here, I mean, really, like someone selling stainless steel straws or those holdable straws, like...
You were at MMA.
Oh, yeah.
There were so many steel straws.
I'm just saying, they're like...
I read the words and there's somebody who's trying to make them.
Yeah.
Like, because like stores, like restaurants could buy them and then charge, just set up charge.
Bring it back, yeah. So, yeah, and then the rest is the same.
I'm sorry, could you limit the cross-talk during, just while we're working this out? Just for the benefit of viewers watching the video?
So then, and then the rest is the same, although again, I'll eliminate the word biodegradable.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Uh, biodegradable, yeah, I think that, that's good. Okay, so let's look at some exemptions then. Thin film plastic bags, dry cleaning, newspapers, produce, meat, bulk foods, wet items, similar virtually typically without handles.
So produce is automatically out of there.
So produce is out, so produce is out. Now newspapers, this one really gets caught in my craw because, you know, we do have an ordinance right now that it makes throwing newspapers and plastic bags against, it's against the law in East Hampton.
You mean, you mean the advertising?
Oh, yeah.
Reason only about that.
We have an ordinance that prohibits that and charges a fee to the sponsoring organization, not the deliverers. And it's unenforced right now, so we might want to go back and take a look at that.
How would we enforce that? Would we have to get our attorney to write a letter to whoever does the distribution, like Gazette?
For anybody, because anybody that, so the, the law states that they have to be placed on the door, like, at the door. So like on the steps or on the porch, they have to be placed on the door. They cannot be thrown, they cannot be left on the street, they cannot be left on somebody's driveway.
Not in, not in the driveway?
Nope.
And no, not no plastic bags either?
No, they are allowed to have plastic bags, but they, um, they have to, right now, they're, the reason they're in plastic bags is so they can throw them on the floor.
Right.
You know? So, I mean, that's just, that's just an enforcement thing, if enough of us care that we...
Yeah, and let me know what you do and I'll do that for you.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna put them, I, I even understand if you're placing something on my porch that's raining sideways, you might want to have a bag. But why can't that bag be compostable?
Right.
Why can't people have little, you have like, um, boxes for your paper?
Yeah, well, that would be cool.
So...
I mean, do you want to try somewhere, you have so...
Do we want to, do we want to exempt this newspaper piece too? Or do we want to like...
Remove that, you mean?
Yeah, so they would have to, so they would actually be covered.
Yeah, because I mean, we are...
Why couldn't, why couldn't they get a compostable plastic bag in a newspaper? I understand.
I don't have a problem, it'd be hard to enforce, but I'm all for it.
Or they just put in, when it's gonna be raining, the bag.
Well, but you could put it in like, like the produce bags from Trader Joe's or STM 6400. So why can't they use a bag like that on the, on the, you know?
Because I think the way that they make it, the paper goes, like, they have a process. So like every paper goes...
No, I am sure, I'm sure that they do, I'm just saying.
The person who delivers the paper puts it in the bag. Because I had a new person delivering my paper. And the person who delivered it before was very nice, he knew I hated plastic bags and he wouldn't put it in. And this new paper, it just came on, not only did he put it in a plastic bag, he hung it on my bail box so it had holes in it, so it was useless. But he eventually, I said, just only when it's raining, please do not, and so it's the, he has the roll in the car. And they, I mean, maybe...
So is that the Gazette or something, or is that... So I, I think the ones that are the more prevalent ones are the, it's a, it's a...
The red, the little red bags, yeah. Those just drive down.
What you're saying is those companies can then certainly buy appropriately certified bags.
Probably if they, because this, they have a roll in the car.
See why not?
They have a roll in the car.
So anyway, let's, let's tentatively take that out and like, you know, and, you know, we passed that ordinance years ago and I'm, so I'm a little sour on the people that throw those bags everywhere.
Well, and so bulk foods, what's the difference between bulk foods and produce?
Rice, rice.
Yeah.
Paper bag.
Paper bag.
So let's take bulk foods on there. I mean, the more exemptions we have, the more people are gonna get around it.
Yeah, no, I agree, now meat, I don't remember why.
Well, it's because it, the blood comes out. People just need to...
Yeah, I know, that was pretty common in a lot of things, like meat and fish were, for some reason...
It's good, well, they carry pathogens.
Yeah, like I know Corcella's uses paper, but I forget why a lot of these, they exempt meat and fish. But like, the, the meat, it's, that's, that's down below. So I don't know why, so the answer is, uh, yeah, I mean, I don't, I would say we could always exempt it for now, but let's go back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to, I'm fine to.
There were values coming in, so we have to give them to the ball. They do have compostable plastic bag, so...
Okay, so that would fall within our...
That would fall within, yeah, but, but we will have lots of ball happening.
All right, but like you're talking about like the nuts and things like those?
Yeah.
Like they have all foods.
Yeah, it's compostable at this point, again, it has to be in a facility, company, so you can write your own.
Yeah, I guess.
So what item seems pretty bond? I mean, it could be anything, right?
Yeah, a term, that, that again is boilerplate language, so I don't, I'm not sure, you know, what you can eat.
Well, what is a wet item? I mean, fish is a wet item, I guess.
Like if you buy one for a month.
Yeah. Right.
That's kind of, I can't be in a paper shop.
You can put a fish in a paper bag.
I think there are already soon.
Could be, I wonder, yeah, I don't know, I mean, we could just remove that.
I mean, I don't know, like, I guess my question here, when, when it comes to this whole 4.1, like, I feel like a lot of these are things that you probably could do with a compostable bag.
Yeah.
So the question is, well, the first question is like, is that true? And if not, wouldn't they just be able to apply, just go for an exemption?
Mm-hmm.
No. Right, yeah, so like dry cleaning, well, they don't make a dry cleaning bag that's, let's say...
Yeah.
Which I'm sure someone does. Yeah, that's a really good point, so, uh, we could just take that part out.
Yeah, I mean...
We've already identified, I mean, again, even the meat thing, like, like, like Mr. Corcella said, he wraps all his stuff in paper, so if for whatever reason someone feels that they have to wrap their meat in plastic, they can apply for an exemption. But, hey, I agree, I'm just saying, like, so maybe just take that whole section out, right?
So, section 4.1?
Yeah, I think, I think you're being a report, Tom, because at the end of the day, hey, I have a dry cleaning business and they don't make a bag.
Or they're price prohibitive.
Right.
A lot of business.
Yeah, right. Yeah, well, just take that out.
Yeah.
4.2 basically addresses plastic wrapping.
Yep, which I think is, is, has a viable use in a food industry. Some things, right?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I think that that was pretty standard in a lot of things, uh, the...
How about, no, I'm just looking at, uh, the 4.3, the hospitals and nursing homes, does that cover meals on wheels?
Well, meals on wheels potentially would be covered by 4.7, food prepared or packaged outside of East Hampton. So, I mean, we don't have any, we don't, we don't have any, I mean, I don't know, I don't even know where that comes from, again, that's boilerplate language.
Right, okay.
But I think that that's gonna be pretty common in a lot of other ordinances.
Because we don't really, we don't have a hospital in East Hampton. And we don't have a nursing home, do we?
We have a, not like...
Nursing home component with them, like? The later, I don't, later, yeah, they have assisted living, but they don't have like an actual, they're... Yeah.
Yeah, that's another component of the, the, um...
Right, yeah.
And I forget, it's not in East Hampton, it's somewhere else.
Well, they have, there's one, South, South Street in North Hampton has some keys, but I'm not sure what they're, they're the later poll.
So I just, I don't know if that is necessarily appropriate for a couple of hospital nursing.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we could just, the question is, removing it, any food packaging used during direct patient care in hospitals? It's probably for bigger cities.
Yeah.
I guess there's no harm in taking it out.
Okay. Exempt.
Yeah.
Yeah, this four point, well, this one, I don't know if we're at the same, we're in the same, but for the paper copy, four point four, it seems like.
Plastic covers covered that are not replaceable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a.
Or, and I would say maybe might, uh, compostable substitutes.
Yeah, I guess the other, the flip side of my original point, which I still kind of stand by, but just add a little bit of nuance. We don't want literally every business in town, like if there's something, like, because the board, that's just a huge amount of, the Board of Health would be the ones approving them. So, you know, if there's things that are pretty like uncontroversially, like, well, then it's fine, I think it's fine to have these in there.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying. Because like, it's not like we should cut this whole section and just say, well, they have a problem with this.
No, because then there's going to be a hundred exemptions, right?
Yeah, there's going to be a hundred business owners in here, all with their own really super specific thing.
Right, so the Board of Health. So these create standards so that the health agent is not having to enforce every single thing, question thing.
Yeah.
Well, just plastic covers, does that cover, um, that one issue about sauces? So we have something that's a compostable container, but the top cap is.
I think so, although they actually do make some, some, some good compostable liquid containers. But that's all, I didn't want to get into that discussion with our, but, uh, but I think she's talking about like, you know, this tiny little like, one ounce.
Salsa.
Yeah.
Salsa.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't, um, yeah, and I think that, that does cover, and that's what I was saying was that, you know, there is language in here to kind of mitigate some of those concerns from people, so.
So this, that goes down to the hardship piece, which I think is fine.
Instead of mandating degradable, we'll say about compostable at four point five.
Wait, I think, do you have a four point five that I don't?
Any other packaging that is non-compostable, for which there's available substitute?
So that a hardship is found?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Um, any bags which are purchased by a retail establishment prior to the passing of this ordinance, and proof of the date of such packaging must be presented upon request.
Are we exempting some of these?
No, I, I went back and changed it. So like, we're, we're at the, I was.
Four point seven.
So, so, I want to tell you guys ended up, how do you, how do you want this version? I didn't send you one earlier. Is this from the council package?
Uh.
Or is this something I sent, is this what I sent you earlier?
Okay. I'm going to check with Liam right before I, okay, yeah. Bye. Thanks, Lindsay.
Okay, needs to prepare the package outside of East Hampton. Okay, that sounds good. So penalties, let's go down to section five. Are we good to get to section?
Thank you so much, and I'll, I'll sign this. I thought I did already.
Oh, yeah, I will too.
What's more about here, do you want to station?
Uh, that's, oh, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's probably why, yeah.
Okay, um.
Let's talk about just for a second.
Yeah.
Four point six, I, I have spacing. Add an end date to the grace period. So for previously purchased, can you try to put a date in there, like one year after we were exposed to it? Definitely add that.
I like that.
I think so, yeah.
Uh. This, how would you, how would you word that?
Well, I mean, if somebody has already purchased five years' worth of bags.
Which they're not.
Which are not biodegradable, they're not compostable, then either they're going to give them to customers, or they're going to throw them out. They're, like, what's the difference?
Yeah, I don't know. I think it's, it's expected that they'll use them up, and once they use them up, they start, they, they have to adhere to the language. So I kind of agree with you, because I think that, I, I, look, I agree with both of you. I know where you're coming from, but I think that what Tom's saying is basically, that, that provides a real hardship. Like, you just spent, uh, let's just make it the number, a thousand dollars on bags, and we can't use them anymore because of this. So, I think the intention is they have to use up the stock they have. Once it's gone, it's gone.
Right.
So.
I don't know if there's actually any cases where like, that's the sort of bulk people. I mean, I know that I, well, yeah, anyway.
Well, and I mean, and I think, well, I think what we're trying to avoid is someone who's like, I don't like this ordinance. I'm going to get around it by keep buying these bags and keep showing this receipt. You know, like, that's what I'm saying. I mean, but if, if they're willing to go, you know, I, I, that would be suspect hopefully to the enforcement agency.
Okay, so I'm like open to discuss, I see what you're saying there. And I, or, you know, somebody stop piling forty years' worth of bags in there.
So do we want to say like, maybe we do what? So you're saying we do want to set like something?
Purchase, uh, must present a request.
Yeah, but I would want it to be like a very generous grace period. Not like a year, maybe like two, two or three years.
With, with, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah.
Just because if you're, if you're a business that doesn't hand out a lot of bags, and you buy some like mega bulk.
Can we just say, can we just say that, um, you know, uh, instead of putting like a year number on here, like that they would be eligible for a hardship deferment? If, if they have a, you know.
Oh, if they still have inventory, uh.
That isn't used.
That makes a tough sound.
Yeah, they may apply for a hardship.
Yeah, if they, if they really, if they really are legitimately in this place, or they're like, look, I just spent all this money. I, I don't just call.
Okay, so if a business, um, has residual inventory, um, uh.
Well, they can apply for a hardship deferment.
They may, af- after a certain, or just after the year.
Just, yeah.
They may apply.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
I think that's probably what it's.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Health department, or something, the issue.
Sure. So, I mean, hey, if we got the health department on board, that's great, because we tried to get the, um, building commissioner on and that was just, they're.
Yeah, I mean, she basically was cool too. Again, as I said, she's like, oh yeah, we've done this, so.
Yeah. One, this is a little bit, which you notice a violation shall impose a penalty against retail establishment. Penalty for each violation occurs after the issuance of the note shall be no more than fifty for the first, hundred for the second offense, and all subsequent subsequent payments shall be made in twenty-one days to city clerk. Uh, and not payment for such fines will be enforced through civil action, I think, in just court. Um, so we should probably, let's check in with Barbara about that piece. Make sure she's okay with it.
Oh, the city clerk?
Yeah.
Oh, we'll get over that.
She doesn't necessarily like things being added to her, her.
So where are like other fines? Where do other fines go now?
Uh, it could go to the, the treasure, the tax collector, probably.
Oh, why don't we just do that?
Yeah.
Because someone's collecting money.
So let's, let's, I think that's one of the things that we should just.
Let's just see, like, if some, where, yeah, where do the, where do other, like, health department?
Parking fines, like, health department and parking, like, like any violation fines, like.
Right.
Should go to the same place. I'm thinking, uh, I don't have a side anymore.
Question for Bree, it's just like, if you find somebody for something else.
Right.
How do they pay it?
Alright, let me.
Because it makes sense for it to be the same process.
Yeah, let me make a note to myself. I'll just call her tomorrow. Because she's, she has other, there's other fines that she's.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, probably, uh, regarding, uh, who fines. Because it's assumed, yeah, definitely.
Uh, can I ask how you come up with the number amount of what we find would be, like, for the Dutchess County one? It's like a hundred for the first violation, two fifty for the second, and five on the third, which was a, is a bigger area and is countywide because of legislation. Um, but I'm just wondering, how, did you guys discuss these amounts? Because this is a pretty small amount of money for some businesses. They might just sort of disavow it.
Um, yeah, just looking at what some neighboring, other neighboring cities were using. I think these were similar to North Hampton and, might have been Westfield. I looked at a few and they were, I think the highest, I think these were pretty similar to what other people were using.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And Westfield, Westfield did something. Like, Westfield's got either, or either bags or polystyrene, I can't remember which one, have to go back and look, yeah. Because I was most interested in theirs because I assumed, I wanted to see specifically, I think apropos, I think when we were applying, you know, I wanted to see what the community did, which tends to be a little bit more conservative. One, one little note I have, um, five, the content of five four is already nested outside five three. The payment shall be made in twenty-one days. Yeah.
So it's.
I wonder why, yeah.
Okay. So I think date of effect is fine. Um, hardship deferment, deferment, uh, seven one seems fine.
Is date of effect the same as there?
I think.
I know you suggested.
The sale, because you gave me the copy and you had.
I didn't, I didn't put that note in there. Yeah, I, I think that, I think there's so many things to this too. And, you know, giving businesses time to find vendors, doing all this community effort. I don't, I would love it to go into effect immediately, but I think it's just like being fair and, and doing all these other things that are going to be part of a bigger discussion and make this more of a holistic piece of legislation.
Yeah.
I mean, I saw that you take, I think we were going to go on it, but come around December, we can get this thing done by summer, if it's, if it's very, actually, it's much easier to have.
Let's just, I mean, so here's my one question about, uh, in seven three. Um, and I'm, I just kind of want you to push back on this.
Okay.
Like, I don't really have a strong idea, but I just know some people will, is, like, so say that you are the folks who showed up, um, and, um, you have your, your boba straws. And, I mean, I feel like there's got to be something out there. Maybe you can do that with metal and they're thick enough that you could possibly wash them with. I don't know. But like, let's just say for a moment that, that this is a critical part of their business and that we're, you apply for your hardship exemption and two subsequent hardships exemptions, you know? I guess this is, also has a year, you're now four years from the time to be past this, and just nothing like this has hit the market because we can't control that. Like, and are they just out of luck?
So that's a good question. So I think, so I'm, I went back to section four for exemptions. And maybe instead of, maybe instead of, so, uh, it's mine, it's four point five, and any, any other packaging that is non-compostable, for which there is no available substitute, so that a hardship is found by the methods ground section seven below, maybe remove that so that a hardship is found by the method of distress. In other words, it's, you're just exempt if there's packaging that there's no available substitute, period. And you reference four point five. I think the hardship stuff has more to do with, oh, we're working on it, but we haven't found a vendor that's affordable, or, um, so, would that make more sense to you guys?
It may, well, it, um, from a vendor, probably from a business perspective, yes. From a city perspective, it's a little bit tricky because, well, it might be, again, you know, I'm interested. But if you have a, like a, so say that you're the health inspector and you walk into a place and they've got their non-compostable, non-reusable plastic boba straws, right? And you're like, hey, that's not in the ordinance. And they're, they say, well, we can't find them.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Like, then, 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 like, like on what grounds are you going to have this dispute? You know, I like the hardship exemption because it means that the business comes forward and says, hey, we're looking at, because then say that a business comes forward and says, hey, we're looking at it and we just can't find an acceptable one. And they say, uh, I don't necessarily think that's true because these other five businesses that sell their similar products already have, so maybe you should use one of those. We're not, we're not granting you that exemption.
So maybe just take that out and basically you have to keep applying every year. You have to keep demonstrating that there's, there's nothing available.
Right.
As part of your, 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 your extension, uh, but like, I agree with what you're saying. Like, so, so I think what you're saying is, well, we already showed that there's nothing, there's no, uh, substitute for this straw. And in five more years, looking at crystal ball, there's not going to be anything available for the straw. But you're only giving us two years, and so we're kind of out of luck after two years. And so what are we supposed to do now? We can't use it at all. Is that what you're kind of saying?
Yeah, like, I'm saying, if they come forward, they say that, and it's like, well, no, there totally is, and it's time's up, you've got to do it. That's one thing. But if they can legitimately demonstrate that there is some aspect of their business model for which, like, the market has yet to supply a compostable alternative, then, like, I don't see how we can just like, what, find them a hundred bucks a week for the fact that somebody else hasn't stepped up to figure out a solution to their problem.
Yeah, I think, I think people who keep requesting extensions, it will ultimately be up to the, the health agent. They're basically going to be like, no, like, I, I have research right here and there's no reason why you can't purchase this.
Right, and then they can have that conversation.
Right.
The health agent will actually board them?
Well, it'll be the Board of Health that handles the, the exemptions.
I mean, I think for now, I'm okay with taking that out because the worst case scenario, if we realize that that's a problem, we can put it back in.
Yeah.
What about having, you can also, during time, when they apply for their exemption, we can do research, if they can do research and show what's the research that they've done, you know?
Well, that's, uh, there's something in here, I think that happens in a.
So could we just strike the, sorry, I didn't. Um, can we strike the words for no more than two additional one-year periods? So this is maybe extended upon written application of the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I'm just looking at this. That the firming grant in this enforcement section may be extended, may be extended upon written application.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's a great point because you're right. Like, basically you're almost, like, what if there's some sort of no solution?
Some super specialized product.
Right.
That just haven't, like, there's not enough people doing it to warrant someone putting the R and D and figuring it out. You know, I hope that doesn't happen, and I hope that when people come forward, they'll actually say, actually, this, this absolutely does exist and here's what you got to do. I just don't want, like, because, excuse me, um, because the implications of this would be pretty expensive for someone who has no choice but to serially offend. I just want to make sure that we're not setting this up for a situation where we suddenly look kind of unfair.
But I think that's a great point, and I, I have no issue with that.
I have no issue with that.
Well, we have a list of, of acceptable products and acceptable companies for, are we going to, like, will the health, they're the only one looking at those here, looking at the issues. We have a list of, you know, down to, they use them, and the health agent might not have them.
Just send them to the.
I mean.
Yeah.
The health agent, how are they have a list of, of people?
I mean, here's what I can say. And excuse me for my cough, I swear, it's not the current virus. It was like two weeks ago. It's a, it's a wet mucousy cough, which my understanding is not what it is. Too much information, but anyway. Um, uh, look, every Board of Health meeting is open to the public. So any interested citizen who feels like an exemption maybe shouldn't be granted, or like someone's trying to skirt the ordinance, any sort of, I don't know, sort of people who show up, you know, like, you guys would be more than welcome to show up to any of those meetings and say, oh, actually, on this point, you know, this other restaurant does the same thing, they're, they're doing this.
But that's what, that's what, don't, don't know.
The, the, that's ideally the health agent would be the one, you know, and then they'd bring that before the Board of Health. They think, actually, I think, I think that this is legitimate. I don't know. But, but any citizen, you know, at, literally any meeting in East Hampton is able to show up and voice their opinion. And that's, and that's a professional.
Yeah, that's what it does.
Well, you know, it's.
Well, and I, so I, I agree with, on seven point three, I agree with that. And I think, seven point four would, would require them to show documentation, which I think makes sense.
And, and the notice is on the person, not the board. That takes the administrative part, yeah.
And, and then the Board of Health may approve the deferment application in whole or part, with or without conditions that a city deems necessary to protect the environment and public health, the, and for the interest of this ordinance. Um, you know, I, I, I think that that's fine. Generally, in ordinance, you don't want to be nebulous. It's a little nebulous. Uh, but I think the intent is clear.
I, I think it's nice because it says to the board, like, we're trusting you guys to make.
Yeah, which is, you know, that, and, and that intent being clear, I think is an important piece. Because, I mean, what, you know, what it deems necessary depends on the board.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, that's my, my only, it's a mild concern, it's not, it's not a, it's not a hard concern, but I just want to say it. Um, and I, I think obviously the severability is, is, is boiling plate, so.
Yes.
I think that's good, and I think, you know, I think we're at a good place to, when the next time we come back to this, to put this into a, a potential, you know. Yeah, like, a, a product that we could probably bring to the council.
So all the changes we talked about, um, am I allowed to send, I can send those to you?
Oh, please send them to, we, we just won't deliberate, but we can, I think, that was one of, one of, the reason why I used the older copy was, I, I think it's, uh, I couldn't find it in my city email, so, um, if that is, would be good, um, cause I, I prefer looking at the actual document as opposed to the, um, the PDF scan of the.
Yeah, I did send you a more, more document, and then, um.
Do we have to send this to the solicitor?
Let's sit on that, let me, let me, let me, let me ask.
Yeah, it might be the type of thing where he also says, there's, I mean, he could, yeah, it might be the type of thing where he's, he wants to peek at it and say, there's nothing here, or I would think I'd have to actually.
Right.
But this, this is the hour in which he looks at it, in charge of, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
I guess it starts with fifteen minutes.
The question is, if this is not demonstrably different than what's been done in, like, in a multitude of other places.
And I don't think, I, I mean, I don't think that there's been a precedent set around them being challenged, I don't think, it seems like they're being implemented without challenge.
Right.
It might be one of those things where it's worth challenging.
It might just be, yeah.
The mayor and seeing, maybe even just, hey, we're doing this, it's not really that much like any of the other ones, do you feel like there's anything that jumps out that you're, you're feeling, giving the look at?
Do you want me to, you, which of us, uh, you might be?
Well, when I have a finished copy, um, I can, I can, I'll talk to the mayor and.
Okay, I'll make all these changes tomorrow or tonight.
Do you have other stuff to do, you can wait a couple days.
I wanna get the pass.
Couple days, if you want, so.
All right, so, so, okay, a couple questions, uh, so, we are meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, six P M. So, do you think we'll get to this then?
Uh, yes, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
But did, do you want to talk, are we gonna talk about the setbacks and all that?
We can, uh, yeah, I, I think that if we take a look at the, the changes and maybe have some, you know, um, I think we can probably handle more than one.
Okay, because most of the changes we've probably made, we just made.
Yeah, correct.
Is that the first statement?
Yep.
Okay. Should we just vote to make that not one?
Yeah.
Um, do you want, is there anything we need to motion on now, or do you want to?
I don't think so.
And I'll give you two, a copy, we'll review it again, and then we'll motion to accept the.
We don't have, if, if there's no new information comes forward, or no, you know, any other things, then I, I think that'll probably be fine.
Alright.
Yep.
Alright, so if that looks good theoretically, then on the April first meeting, you can set up a public hearing for, for the team, potentially.
Potentially.
Well, Earth Day doesn't fall on an actual, oh, wait, what, what's it, it's, yeah, so Earth Day doesn't actually fall on an actual council day? My, my, my vision was hopefully we can get this to a public hearing around Earth Day.
Earth month.
Earth month, exactly.
I have a presentation at the library, I'm not quite wanting to report, remember, but, um, but, yeah, I'll try to, I'll see what we got.
Well, you are welcome to use any means possible, uh, including, but not limited to, social media, phone calls, postcards, carrier pigeon, or standing out at the boardwalk with a sign to encourage people to support this project event.
Yep.
Alright, cool, thanks for, thanks for spending extra time, I really appreciate that.
It's also the last page of the, I don't see a lot of stuff for that, um, you are, the Lenny and those, and I have, and also, um, um, Warren, you can choose, you have to.
Yep.
Do you want? Thank you so much for earlier.
Mayor, no, what are we gonna do?
Oh, yeah, first day. To adjourn?
Yeah.
Uh, wait, I just, um, I just want to make sure, I, I just look at this really quickly, make sure I have questions about what we talked about. So we're, out, well, completely, with just the dry cleaning and all that stuff, right, they can just apply for, um, okay.
I wanna hand me those.
I read, I read these, and what they do say is, in, to some extent, there are people who purchase more of, like, garbage bags and stuff like that, but they also show that there's still a reduction, and, uh, it doesn't even really get into what some of the things we talked about, it doesn't, it doesn't introduce any of the studies, like, well, why don't your community undertakes X, Y, and Z in terms of, you know, other reuse initiatives, so.
Well, I think, I think then we need to start thinking about composting.
Yeah, that's something I'd like to talk about, but that's to be separate.
It's separate, yeah, it's separate.
Zero install available?
I think they're, well, nobody seconded it, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we have a motion to adjourn, and it's seconded, all those in favor?
I.
Right, we are, yeah.